Oh, do we have? Testing? Testing, okay. We've got Councilman McGlover online, it looks like. I, before we had started, Paul, can you just confirm that you can hear us? Maybe, Paul?
Yes, I, I can hear you.
You're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Muted and your little box is green, but can't hear you.
I can hear you. Let's see. Can you hear me now? No, we can't hear you. Let's see. How about now? You can't hear me? Nope. Um. Now, can you hear me? Well. I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to reconnect.
We heard you.
Could you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Did you say you could hear me?
Yes.
Just gotta.
Let's just.
That's the act of. That's why. No, cuz he hasn't muted.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm looking at you, I don't know. What? Is there anything you're doing, you're over there for some months, waiting for you to do something or?
Oh, you guys are good, I'm just making sure the echo is, sorry. Yeah, I was just making sure it doesn't reverberate throughout the room.
All right. Seven oh three, I'll call this meeting to order. Thanks everybody for joining us.
I come back to you to. You're gonna probably just say this. In this world.
All right.
Yeah, Kev, never Robinson.
Here.
Gettle.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Barry.
Here.
Glover.
Here.
He's here.
All right, moving on to your by police report.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. It seems like every time I get your reports the first month, I always tell you I don't have the stats ready, but I know, but. I'll get them to you as soon as possible, usually takes. Uh, till about ten or twelve of the month, they gather all the stats as well, where the financials that be included in that monthly report. One thing I thought about bringing up the council, and I've done it in the past, if there's anything on that monthly report you would like to see changed or edited, added. I'd like to hear, if you have ideas, let me know. Um, because it probably is smoothest time to do it, maybe with the first year, I can set things up ahead of time. So, um, happy to entertain any thoughts when that comes out. I wanted to mention that we did our annual, or semi-annual DEA takeback. This last Saturday, last Saturday was very busy for us for unified, because we. Did the takeback, we also had the Main Street event for Halloween, at the same time we did. Uh, a community event in Southwest, they had a similar Halloween event up on their island, so. Pretty busy for us, um, the takeback ended up having fifty-five and a half pounds of. Uh, drugs and unwanted medical supplies that were. Given back and transferred those to DEA, they. They take those out of state different than early facility. It's a good program, we do it twice a year, there was a little bit of miscommunication. Uh, because if you get the DEA takeback, it takes you to Hillcrest High School, or refer to you as that, that presentation. Uh, but we advertise here in Midville, we can beat in the precinct, so. Um, we, ironically, we split perfectly because our officer wanted to fill out about half the ship. And we were going like what happened when we found the precinct, so I think we still had a little bit of collection, it's probably typically what we do twice a year. Uh, Jiffy Lube's doing a new program where. They, free of charge, will mark your catalytic converter on your vehicle. Uh, they'll, they'll spray it with a. A heat resistant fluorescent, it's hideous looking green paint. And also etch in your venom, the catalytic converter, but that's meant to you if you turn. Uh, that, if someone were to look under there, they might choose it, or if perhaps that catalytic converter stolen. Uh, it might give us some ability to trace back who's the actual victim of that, that is, that's part of the. Even when we put a case together, we can't generally match the victim to the case, uh, cuz a lot of times they'll. Uh, destroy those catalytic converters, and you face them to a point where it's, it's hard to. Determine where that came from, so, free of charge. Uh, I'm pretty proud to say that our, our Jiffy Lube is down here by Windco was the first one to do that. Uh, and they told me within the next week, this week, it should be safe, like all the Jiffy Lube's off this, you don't need to get a oil change into, you know, that is fine, but. Uh, they did a demo for us, there's a press release, it took like five minutes, they brought a car in, they painted it, they inscribed it in underneath it, and. They were out, so it's a good service, we're hoping it has effect on them. The catalytic converter thefts, you're seeing. I did get a letter of appreciation, uh, for Stacy Fring, she's our analyst at UBD. Uh, I don't know, we used to have two analysts, and when we brought them back to the regional services, we probably went down with one of them. And Stacy typically gets last minute requests of that, um, and. And I'll, I'll say that myself, as well, as well as St. Andrew, I've asked for. Um, very short timelines, this latest one, she just had knee surgery, and somehow she still did it at home. Um, and Sergeant Richardson recognized that, really appreciates her hard work and dedication. Uh, she also does a sec, as a secondary, she's one of our hostage negotiators, so. Um, she's got a busy schedule. Always out and about. Um. You may have heard me mention the Good Landowner Program, I did actually add three. Of our newer clothing developments in there, uh, there's copper, glass, motor, and North Union Act. In talking to our prosecutor, Lisa. There was, uh. Kind of been a little bit of a delay of adding some of those, uh, per statute, or there was a conflict in the Good Landowner Program. When we decided UBD and cooperation with Midville City is we're just gonna add them, and as a courtesy, provide them. A copy of what these services have happened, or police activity that's happened on some water market developments. And that's hopefully to inspire that they, um, do proper management, they have a problem. You know, tenant or something like that, maybe manage that themselves, we were taking a fire, fire services, so. We did add those, I did a preliminary in Albreo, and then we seem to be. Uh, real day drains right now at this point, we're gonna, this month, we'll get a full look at what's required. Uh, this upcoming Thursday, we're having a blood ride for Red Cross out of precinct. This is an honor of Sergeant Peterson, who passed away years ago, sudden tragedy, one more, and I start. A car event this year, and in your past, that, I mean, Corey was his dad. And, uh, along with that, I may be leveraging some of the. The Utah Blue Bank. Program and saying, if you want to come and give blood, drop off some of this, you be not to go there in the city, she's a little friendly. Friendly, uh, contest going on there. Um, anyhow. Um, that's pretty much all I have to say, upcoming events, we do have Shop With A Shield that is set up in. It's at our Walmart, that's where any, uh, funds raised, uh, UBD, they kind of offer a shopping. Program similar to what we've seen across the valley as Christmas gets a little bit closer. And, um, I know the mayor considers getting more into that, I actually, you should be getting, have about already invited to that, and I believe, maybe. Open up your council halls. Any questions for me?
Sirs. Chief, I have a quick one, uh. One of my residents reached out, he lives in Alamo's intersection of Seventeenth and. And he says, he is an army medic, a former army medic, and. He says he hears a lot of accidents, he said that intersection, which causes him to. Offer assistance, um, she's living there, you know, I walk a lot, so I walk through that intersection, we're all speaking. Is that an area that's good? Just maybe keep an eye on, and I know I see you guys there, but there's a lot of stuff that happens there, it's not so great. Um, I know we've had devices that collect, yeah, I can't, it's actually moving, but there you can see. Average speeds going through the line. Now, we have people coming like.
Yeah, we could, I'd be happy to send you an email, that way I can. For where that's at, even if you give me his name, I'll maybe found some information on, I'm gonna be happy to do it. I don't know how the whole setup is down there for a stealth collector, but I think, but we have holes down there, I'd be happy to. Deploy that, it does only catch traffic one way, so we can do it, like for week one way and week. Um, I, I know being them. At night, uh, we, you can see where they go down there, little exhibition riding, and they're, they're tough to catch.
It's where, um, we have the issues with the lanes that have to be reconned.
Okay, oh, I see, I would better know if I're in town. Yeah. Yeah, we've, okay.
I'll, I'll send you an email.
Okay, appreciate it.
Anything else?
With the, uh, drug takeback, I was in the, I saw it going today, they have like. We've almost been a little lost, there was a little station there, is this a similar program, or can they not take into many things, or? I guess I, I saw that, and it was a couple of pictures in there, it was the sheriff's office, for my cordless.
We have one in our precinct, yeah, we've had that for years, um, it is locked, uh, they come up, there's normal business hours, and we're happy to. Take any, and we, we actually collect quite a few, uh, drugs, people randomly, just come in there and pop them off, yeah, it's a no question ask. So, yeah, we do have one. All right, thank you.
Hey, uh.
Hey, uh, next up, we have veterans, uh, the Veterans Day is November, so, on Friday, and. And before we get to that, I have to ask any veterans who are standing, they want to at least count one.
Thanks.
To your service, and for standing for all that I agree with this law. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have the vital freedoms of the way of life. And whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century. And whereas hundreds, thousands of Americans have given their lives whilst serving in the armed forces during the past century. And whereas Utah State Veteran Population is estimated to be a hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one. With nine hundred and fifty-four veterans within their density. Whereas our veterans are brave, selfless individuals, who will be called willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives of others. And whereas our veterans understand the important task before the American servicemen and women can now keep watch. And whereas on this patriotic occasion, let us all commit ourselves to the great meaning of fostering the spirit. Of rededication, the ideals that we have, that have served as the foundation of this great country. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, therefore, I, Marcus Stevenson, heir of Midgusley, on behalf of Midgusley Council, where I claim, remember the level. Twenty twenty-two, the Veterans Day, encourage the community to acknowledge, honor the contributions of our veterans. To the principle of democracy, individual freedom, human rights. And in this thereof, I have clearance to set my hand on the fifth seal of Midgusley this first day of November. All right, moving on to. Pounds, if there's a link, um, I would otherwise. What's your hands? These. Great packet. I put together, and, uh. Only one minor change. Two thousand seventeen. Sorry, this was the first. Any of the things I have on. Um. Gave one copy to each of the mayors of the incorporated city within the surrounding area. And got almost no response from them. My name is Lawrence Gorman, my address is where I am standing. That being because I am homeless and I am here to advocate on the path of homelessness. Most of whom do not have the opportunity, the time, or the ability to advocate for themselves because of their circumstances. Um. Sorry, I never really compared these, I just kind of get them off, so I can get them in my box. Those packets each contain two letters, one, uh, both to the cities of the mayor, actually three letters, two of them to the cities of the mayors. A list called addressing this homelessness. And a, a letter to the, uh, Department of the Director of the Department of English Services for the county. And an outline for a campground concept. As a general rule, I haven't passed enough for the purpose of trying to advocate specifically for the campground idea. Uh, in the last couple of years, but more to make the point that homeless can. Are aware of their problems, they know what possible solutions are, and contribute to their own. Uh, path back to being housed. And that is something that, that, that everybody needs to take into consideration when, when trying to disciple to do about homeless issues in. Their local areas, I would also, at this point, at the point, I'd like to think the city of Midvale, taking on the homeless shelter. Which is a huge responsibility. But we need to be better than shelters, we need to do better than shelters, they're not, you're not wrong, they're not bad. But there's more to it, homeless, this is not something that can be solved with a single idea, with a single, uh, solution, there is no one single solution. There has to be cooperation, it is not something that can be left as a burden on any one single city within an area. The homes come from all cities in the county, they come from all counties in the state, they come from all states, countries. They are all over the world, I have been in contact, people all over the world, the problems are essentially the same. Each individual has different reasons why they got, why they become homeless, the homeless are, some of them doctors, some of them lawyers, some of them truck drivers. Some of them are, uh, drug addicts, or former drug addicts, some of them have mental health issues, but they, those problems that people see as being. The, the cause of homelessness are only a small percentage of those who are actually homeless. Most homeless, I would guess, between seventy-five and eighty-five percent of the homeless population. In this country and in the state. Are quite hardworking people with jobs, who struggle with day to day, have enough to get just money or food. Or to be in a hotel, or to have a tent that they move from place to place, some of them sleeping on the tree because they don't know how that. It is something that needs to change, the approach has been anything but housing first. And the best way to solve a problem for people who are homeless is to start by giving them a home. And then continuing with supportive services. A home does not have to be a house, an apartment, or mobile home. If you are used to sleeping in a tree, on a bench, behind a dumpster. A safe campground where you know you're not going to be kicked out every single night. Where waste removal services are provided, some showers, putting in space. And, and portable toilets sometime, and maybe even a little bit of electricity. This much can be as much of a hobby if you've got nothing else. And you will find that people who are capable, and already have on the streets almost. Will be capable of doing, and taking care of themselves, they will take that launch point of an authorized state campground, and they will get themselves out of the situation. With a little bit of continuing supportive services. And I would like to encourage you, whether you use the layout that I've put in this pack or not. To take serious consideration into a, um, authorized campground, that is one of the, the solutions we use in this battle. To help out the homeless. And otherwise, just look at what the homes need, and include them in your decision made. So we can also, we can show you how to make it, I mean, more permanent solution, for more impact, is. Thank you. Thank you so much, Lawrence. Uh, Lawrence, I had a note, it's in the conversation, um. Other mayors, who really did have a chance, facing one of my city residents, said, most generally, it came by our city. It was so elegant, when we talk about homeless fast, so I just removed your shit, and it was for.
Right, in. I think you started out by saying you gave this letter, you can receive response.
Uh, back in two thousand seventeen, I have, I just gave it to my neighbors. Sorry. Um, I did give it to each of the parents of the incorporated cities, I did not necessarily give it to them in person myself, I left it to the draw, this is most of them. And I've gotten responses up until now, until I started working around it, I didn't get a response from the two cities. And, um. One was okay, the other one was definitely not favorable. The point, if that and now is not just about the campground, like I said. There's a lot of quotes going on, if you read, I believe it's on the third page here. Uh, the top paragraph. That's about where we're from, the population school.
I haven't gone through all this for a second. But is there a way to, does any of this have your contact information?
I can, I can read contact information, no problem. Uh, I will gladly do that. The thing, I, I am on the kind of coalition, as one of the perspectives, I was prepared to assist the county. And I am happy to help out, you have file about the task group within a coalition. That is made up almost exclusively of those who are or have been homeless. For our input on what, what can and should be done. Then you have to understand what's there, and it's not to say that we don't, that we don't, if anybody else hasn't understood, we're simply, but not the same understanding. And there are a lot of things that need to happen before any of the programs that are already in place can be effective, if they are effective at all. One of the first things that has to get done is you have to build trust with those who are homeless. Because those that you, that, that are considered to be housing diverse or shelter diverse are not. They've just kept in this system too many times, gaining out of housing, and it's been so temporary that they've just not been. Unwilling to trust that it will take, and they've just decided to. Find their own way to deal with. I am to that point myself. But I know that we have to have somebody who can stand up and help me enforce, we're learning off their own means. We are the closest thing there is within the human population to fair enough, but we are not fair enough. And you cannot do what one may be suggesting. In a burden, in a backwards sort of way, at the great meetings back in two thousand seventeen. We're not passing laws that you can stay in, we're a place of shelter and adopt yourself, if adopting is help was an option, I think it would have been done already. It's not. Even though most of us who are the worst of all. Know what we need to do. But you have to get us to trust. And programs, to what we were doing. We want to go in and back out. It's not worth it. We have enough stress to just try and find food and shelter and everything. Are you more of the public hospital? Better than anything. A public comment, I will not settle over those. Thank you.
Maybe.
Sorry, boss, I would treat you with our, we are the public function of the. Excellent. Plus, even if I was not settled with her. Step forward to being fine. Decision.
How's everyone doing tonight? My name is Justin Thomas, doing six avenues, six seventy-eight west. That was the building that's going up, first thing I'd like to establish is what happened this weekend was awesome. Need a bomb. But there was no parking on those streets for people to park their vehicle. My car got status lights. People were parking in front of people's rightways. So if you got all the people that need to get out, they cannot get out. Versus your vehicles cannot respond on there, on those streets, you gotta decide if you can shut it off here. Shut it off here, but you get to do it, we got, on the street, right? Upstate's out of town. Second one. When it's coming up, these people parking on the streets. Maybe you ought to decide if you can make all these streets one way. Instead of double bypass, because FedEx, no good, delivery trucks cannot get up or down. Spur. Has to respond to get a water truck out there. They've got a garden, it was up there, sprayed it down a couple times, my truck, my cars, the house, everything was covered in dust. Three roads down, three feet of road, streets down, guy comes up. Starts complaining about how much dust was in there, his or that. So there's some things that, that development's going to go on, today happened too, because Sixth Avenue, you got that big dump truck stolen. Big equipment. So people are made for working, they're shooting straight up Sixth Avenue. You know, so it's got a resort or something that you can keep that street safe, because at that time of day. Bus comes this way, you know, six, kids are waiting on the side of the road, people are waiting to go to work. But yet, there's so much congestion on Sixth to go to Allen. Yeah.
Um. Something's going to be changed with, uh, events ordinance.
Can you give us your name?
Go on, put up. Sir, can, can you? Jean, boss. I also own half of Ulysses. A property of Ruston Valley. And, um. Something's done. It's all people were residential, perhaps six foot in. How's that? I know. Potential entry. Or. Forty thousand four hundred and thirty, the output. Nobody wants to do a big box of regulation. They keep building it, they don't, I'm trying to be kind of a package. Like Chris got those. They can't even use a driver, because they don't have a law.
Gentlemen, that was the help, you know, and they explained that my was too loud, that's why they turned my off. He told me if you get it, if you worry, get these guys to build them all, divide them, he invented, he turned his mic back on. He says that he's getting so much garbage and everything else from the flower shop, Fred's got those, because they're not shutting the garbage can, it's, cans are on them. It's going into his yard, look at that, it's going on the street. When you get all these people, and I see it this weekend, people were eating in front of the house, on the big place, on the ground. You know. We got it to start, we need, this events are awesome, don't get me wrong, they're great, Midville, bringing people together. But some got, like, if you got party here.
Their job of that, not just with this development, but in all, we hear that with all new developments that happen, um. Utah is just a windy state, and Midvale seems to be a windy, a much windier city than any city I've ever lived in. Um, so yeah, I think that's something we can do a better job of. As a city, and I, you know, I've spoken to you about the wall, I agree with you, I think that. Something other than a chain link fence should be there for privacy reasons and also for, for sound.
And stuff like that, vehicles going in and out, they're going to be pointing a nut in, just my, the windows here. But also in the house, when he's facing here, his windows are going to be getting hit.
Yeah.
So how would you like to be watching TV and cars coming and going, and, hey, that was my favorite part of the movie, but you blocked it out.
Yeah. I get it, I understand, I, I, I think that the issues that you've raised are good ones with the fence, um, if we can. Uh, continue talking to the developer and, and see if he's agreeable to doing that, um, I texted him earlier today, I haven't heard anything back just yet, so. You know, unfortunately, it's not something unless we have an ordinance in place already, we can't force. That developer to do, but, um, we have worked with other developers in the past for. Issues like this and, and come up with a agreeable solution for every, everyone, so I, I, I haven't given up all hope on that yet, but. In the meantime, we can certainly monitor the dust, especially since most city workers can look out the windows and see the dust blowing around there.
And also, I noticed the, like, the storm drain. They do a lot of, uh, work up in Sandy, so I go around and I see all this, I'm eating things, I got waddles. To stop the dirt from going into the storm drain. They have nothing on this one dock here.
All I was gonna say is we'll, we will, uh. They have a SWIP, uh. Permit, and we will have our, uh, stormwater prevention coordinator. Uh, go look at that tomorrow and make sure that they're up to all the standards. And we will, uh, do what we can on that, I understand your frustration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in and letting us know of those.
I'm sorry, I did have one other question, were you saying that? You said there was the property owner that had the issues with the garbage, were you saying that was all the time, or just when those event?
Like the flower shop does not close at this. See, if you get Ace to come out, say he's a driver, he's, they got, they've got that hatch, that like. Put over itself, you put a pad on. He says they're not even shutting that down to block them, okay. Uh, another neighbor, I talked to her, she's, lives on Fourth. Fifth Avenue, Fourth Avenue, where the building is, where the bird is, wherever it is, now that tattoo shop moved in. Four o'clock in the morning, a trailer backed up inside of it, tried to rob that tat, that tattoo shop. So he had to put cameras up on his property. So she's bothered by the, in.
So she's bothered by the industrial, the flower shop and everything else too is because of, you know. When they load their vans, they're right on the corner. Okay. And another thing that was, another problem was the liquor store was like a problem. Come Friday, that liquor store is just blind sign. People get caught up in it. It's painted red. People pay attention to it? No, they don't. How many people are gonna get hit? You know? What it is, is if you can't get a truck down there, be it a fire truck or anything else during those time of day hours.
Yeah, well. All the change in, I mean, he said in past, attended. Sounds like I'm hard to get here six two, but that's our time, I think it works.
It's so intriguing that we have a workshop and that. You know, and those are, yes, that we go over job. Uh, we did have maybe two or three weeks ago, I think we did this, and there was something you he did, we had. Oh, comments back up. And the only reason. He, I don't know, I knew that she was coming that night, make a comment. Otherwise we might tell people who come in, you know. Be kind of weird, just some of them said, like, hey, you wanna make a comment? So it could just be a little awkward, but I guess there's. I don't know, maybe four or five times a year where we don't have a workshop. So it's reasonable combination of those.
Just to uh. Answer your question about what time the schools are being started. Yeah, looks like they're studying shifts, studying sessions for that four thirty. And it may be quite long. And then uh, the business meeting started.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, the audio is absolutely terrible. I can hardly understand what you guys are saying, but. I have nothing this evening.
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll follow it. Alright, uh, moving on from that, uh. Hi, so moving on from that, just for us, I mean, plus it's like, you know, you can talk about our trip to street on X Street. Really well, uh, this is a rather. This was something that. Better than I myself and maybe uh, human place in some of our special parties. Help to work on, uh, so this is a yearly program, actually National Security Center on. Every year they go to different state and so uh, the health department having to be, uh, our hardest to share. Always neighbor, of course, about Jindale, just Jake, if yours are the song that has participated at that time. Uh, with this rule. And some of this uh, program that you go through on how to make a city more, I was making a doodle. Safer for pedestrians, also through that, we think of this crosswalk, I think the idea, you really went to that program, you taking a grant of five thousand dollars. To put on that uh, that crosswalk project, it really excites me. Uh, she's almost talked about this, but you have, on the food drive happening right now. Not only we have competition, we have to get these departments here at City Hall, and also in the competition with UFA specifically. Uh, and new collections happening at Park Station one from the sixth, which is on seven to my south. And we can start to speak to that as well. So thank you, you are so much for helping to make that happen, we're really excited about it. I, I, I would love to say that it does. Exciting as far as the police, so I don't know. Here, but I sure hope so, uh, so we, each law and so good food to be talking about. Uh, this competition started today and it goes to help. Thirdly, uh, Center Street is, uh, many of you may have seen. We were trying to go westbound on Center Street, those lanes have been blocked on. Um, so with the construction happen there. Uh, if A, this construction is supposed to wrap up tonight. Also, we'll see how a problem has to be tomorrow morning. Uh, with that, there was a plan of a full barricade. Place, uh, with developer and company that they hired to do this, uh, they not before that whole plan. So when our city, uh, I believe specifically was uh, planning out. We mainly talked with this developer, they want more in contact with that barricade company, they have them come out and fix this problem. Uh, they did walk off some street streets specifically, it's probably uh, they were going north now, they left. Onto uh, Center. You, because it's a U dot road, after you walk along, you don't came out and said, we need you to include those barriers. Um, so this is the created, the situation. Out, um, and hopefully it's on fine.
So, that's good, but. And this is a very frustrating thing to me, that seems like. As we develop, every single time, you have to start making some new ordinance. Fix what I consider sort of. Lazy work by change, you know, like the steel place, we had to kind of make a new ordinance to fix that. Motors, parking ordinance, we had to fix that. And now I feel like. These areas like in that area should see more rebuild. They should not be allowed to shut all lanes down. Permanently based on it, like in Salt Lake City, they're building skyscrapers. Like huge roads, and they have to shut down both. One whole side, it's usually done off hours at night. If not, they have to find a way to at least open up one lane. Right, and so, um, that one was especially bad because there was like thirty or forty cars turning. And then trying to flip a U-turn, likely. Likely the tracks coming down against what the bull window, where the eastbound, i- if there's no tracks, it would have been, it would have been very bad. So should we now, I think we might be just on our main roads that are considering development that can't shut down. The whole road, like that is such a bad part, there are ways to do it where. You dig out half. You know, and 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 check, you know, following them down the one lane would cause traffic issues, but at least. People can get through, like in that area, there's nowhere to go. And so now, I think it's another developer, I have to think of how can we make another law, which they don't like to do. Because they're, they're kind of reading selfish, they don't like to give community that they're. So I don't know what's all they say he does. But we should try to mirror that because I literally grabbed my two, two twenty plus story buildings that have to navigate. That was gonna be part of mine.
Uh, to give an update on where we're at. Uh, so last week, two weeks ago, I was getting prepared to go to the Cold War or cost control. The word setting up a public increase number up front, so presented that to the board. Uh, with that, we had a couple of changes that we presented, mostly on the focus of the way that we got this draft. Was talking about if they wanted to increase on that would be, whereas we're really focused on costs. This fund balance that we need to increase, so we presented. And often say, you know, we're making sure that this is focused on the costs, not memory fee. The other thing was that we're always trying to make sure that this is provided with increasing flexibility. By, we wanted to hire an extra refill officer or any other recent bodies on that. They are, um, not that intended like to increase, uh, whereas this is really focused on shared services. So that's what we were presenting, that's what we presented. Uh, because we went to that, but what we changed is it was recommended that back to finance. Uh, so. Yesterday, this morning, yesterday. It's this morning, Friday. So in this morning, I presented uh. Uh, this again to, to that committee. Uh, I felt like that was really helpful. We had, most board members were uh. In favor of it, I would have achieved it, but we did have a couple of them struggling to understand why we wanted to do that. I think today helped uh, finally get that on. Uh, but one thing that didn't come out of that is to be aware of it. Is that, that there was a proposal to begin so that this did not affect. Uh, revenue withdrawal, but not, so if we receive a grant. We are not paying more for that grant. Uh, and so that's something that, that came out of that, with that, then. You can even distract them that with that change, uh, otherwise it was exactly what we presented besides that small change. Uh, and gradient here, that's sending it back to us, we will have another opportunity to. That was to it, uh, to get to you before it goes back to the board again later this time. But just, you know, other than that, can there is a move that they want to make, so wanting to go back to. Are there any questions on that? Um, we also learned some things yesterday and. Potential, uh, unified fire. So currently, uh, the Salt Lake County Council pays for some of which can go in control. Uh, that unified fire because. Uh, and in, in the mayor's proposed budget, there's a proposal to cut back this amount. They currently give three point two million, it's a little bit losing contact with the person, but a minimum cut back. Up to the three point two, and that's the part that. Uh, what exactly they're cutting. The concern with that is that essentially what they're looking to do is say since Brighton. A town and they incorporated, there's a, you're saying you are now. Uh, you're, I heard it today, described as we didn't have a manager that we take care of, and we're now full adult. And you need to take care of these expenses yourself, you can no longer do that for you. Uh, a couple of things with this is that in Brighton, uh, the, the, you know, they pulled some of their calls over the last three years. Uh, and found that ninety eight percent of their calls are not Brighton and Brighton. Uh, it's so many visitors, so, um, and. So I think there is this view that this is a huge cost. Uh, if that, if this cost is cut and falls on the Brighton. Brighton is a part of the bike service area, just as we are. Assuming that they cannot, uh, imagine, they're a pretty small town, if they can't pay this extra million up to the three million cost. That will ultimately fall onto U S A to cover. Uh, so that's what we're concerned is that we need a harder, harder bill to say. Corey is because of this. Uh, so today at the county, county council met about this today, people that presented. Uh, we had multiple members of the UFA board there, uh, with myself. And we all gave public comment, asking if you keep this in place, uh, because it should not be. Uh, you have essay to take on this, and really it is. A regional change here. My concern, part of my concern with this is, is A, if they, they cut this. There was a comment of, you know, i- if you're looking at fire costs here, once we contribute, I think people does look at the least. And the other thing is with having a shelter and how often we talk about that, this is the, we're providing regional service. Uh, I do think that Brighton is providing the regional service, we want to get their calls and we send them on those residents. Uh, I, I, I'm worried about seeing that shift in conversations, they're kept being language around. It is, should be on cities to provide public safety. Cause on the same, that is your main thing, cities need to fully provide public safety, you need to do that. And if that becomes a conversation that. That could, if it continues to go that path, is significant for us with having.
But that's too bad because you're mean. We were, the state said, hey, you have to put this here. Well, you have to put this here, you have to do that, and Brighton has. Except, you know, rich people skiing, you know, that, that they're like the most. The most opposite people in society, you know, at, at that point. So it'd be unfortunate, uh, you know. Yeah, I don't like that now. Now that, that was your, you know, I get why I didn't go that way from. Not, I, I, I get that.
But it is a, it's a long term.
Yeah, for sure.
Um, but there's some. Okay, lastly is on the library issue. I began meeting at county council members, basically, uh, I'm going to catalyze, uh, state. We can put them on the record of support and, uh, but at this point, I was met with uh, three. County council members. Actually, I got another guarantee issue from, from line, so. I, I have, I have the one confirmed for the county council members. Okay, that was a long report meeting. With that, uh, council member, whoever's have anything, council member Del.
Thanks Mayor, uh, few things. Uh, first I want to thank Mr. Cornet, uh, audience here for speaking so eloquently on. Those issues on this, I think that's something that a lot of us up here have seen. The bar is very serious. Uh, it was interesting, very. Um, I also wanted to mention, uh, as you know, one being round, so I should maybe, so. Those listening, those in the audience, if you haven't voted, you can do so. So Monday. So Monday, um, and to be, we can mail your ballot back in and drop it off. But it's that.
Yes, we do.
You know what day that starts?
It will be on the election day. Yeah, it's not everybody here to some election. Right. We do have the ballot box out front though.
Right. Um, oh, one other thing. Um, Matt or anyone who might have answered this. Um, whenever an employee leaves, um, a lot of times they have a lot of leftovers in time, but they either don't get paid out or those forever. Um, is there a policy that mentions for, but that we had a a law, I don't know, we've not we have one. Um, just wondering if we have a policy that we allow for some of that sick time to be uh rolled over into the sick time that we allow for employee emergencies. So it's not um lost forever. That might be better use for it.
Well, and we do have the sick bank, which you're referring to, and uh we can, I'm not, I don't really know right now.
Yeah, I didn't need to put it. It was just, it was something Lisa mentioned, not even this issue. Like it happens to all of that. Um, so I don't know if we can look into that. I I I know speaking for myself, I would love to be able to at least put a portion of that, maybe not, you know, one hundred percent of what's left over, but at least, you know, we're we can pay out like ten, ten percent of the same time.
They get paid out. She can move twenty five percent to vacation and get paid out for it. Plus ten percent of that goes to retirement health savings.
So we could maybe put like a matching percentage into the emergency sick bank. I think that would be a good idea. In that, perhaps the board, someone needs. But we may do something. Or sick time, or his or her or their sick time. Signal anyone out.
Okay, cool. You're supposed to figure it out. You just say it's a name.
Um, other thing, I just wanted to mention very quickly. Uh, Brian, Councilmember Brown, starting. I've touched on this issue, but we have an issue in the city where uh one of the developers come to us and they have beautiful plans. Uh, it were part complex and we move and we all on. And even when they build them, they look great. And you know, some of us like me live there. So we live in one of those facilities. Um, what we don't do a great job of, and this is more difficult, is keeping an eye on these facilities once they're up and running after. I just have my own feelings about where I live, we don't get into, but there's just complaints pretty much any of these larger departments in the development of this lax and basic property management. And I think that's something we could perhaps feel a better job of monitoring, making sure that and we bring in the thousands and thousands that we risk that, you know, we're not creating an indoor space where the developer who sold us on this facility would spend the ups and runs. I think that's is going to be a focus of mine in the next few years anyway. It's you know, I've seen it, um, especially with part view. Um, I don't have a attention entirely did. So anyway, part view, you know, they came to us like there's, here's this beautiful facility that we're going to go up here, but you know, once it was turned over to a property manager. Great leverage other than just general um general enforcement. But, you know, I've mentioned, um, dog poop issues here and not. And there just seems to be something that we will do with with these issues. You know, we're we're luring people in to the promise of development and it's really not delivering for a lot of these residents. Hopefully, that's something that that we do is these developments can be um to us.
How about the third?
Uh, I didn't have anything, uh, maybe just a couple of follow up questions on that. I don't know. Yeah, so I understand. Is that, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to think that programs, that's a good landlord program we have. With landlords.
Yeah, there's that. But I mean, there's just like a a quality issue that I don't think PD is gonna, I don't want to get involved in like, hey, keep these stairwells free trash. You know, the average rent at Parkview is more than two thousand dollars a month. And there's trash everywhere. You can go where the barn, there's dog poop in every common area. Um, and, you know, I they know that I am a council member who lives there. And even I run into like a brick wall trying to say, hey, these are all my lanes. Those things that people who I pass in the hallways. So it's just the general unresponsiveness of the property management groups, which, you know, we all know it's like a huge umbrella of, you know, the developer at the top and the property management groups all involved in that same organization from there. I might have an eviction notice on my door.
Well, I, okay, I I just didn't know.
Yeah, it's not. I mean, there are issues of crime and people's cars being broken into. And that's something I think the landlord program addresses. But to me, it's just more of a quality life issue. Um, you know, you had a residential neighborhood where there was one house, we had trash and dog poop and, you know, weird people coming in at eight hours of the night and making people feel unsafe and uncomfortable. We'd probably keep an eye on that house a little bit more, but we have these huge properties where there are sometimes thousands of people living there. You know, we rely on their apartment security people whose job seems to be just to drive around in circles and then greet back.
You're not, I agree. We don't want we don't want these developments to bother the state. It's not attracted to the city.
I think it's one more thing. There's just an issue of there's such a housing story that there's no motivation for a lot of these companies to provide quality services. It doesn't matter if I move out next month, someone could have moved right into my apartment without any break in service to them whatsoever.
Oh, I have heard my time.
Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. One of them was, I already mentioned, your your minutes or minutes. Uh, one thing I noticed Chelsea apartments are reviewing with Tassad. I think it looks really good. It's a nice, like, opening side looks it's nice, but I think it's a very good change for that corner. Sort of brick and siding, but not, it's a very welcome change. They kind of run down brownish color. And so I kind of given them a hard time to pass if you're a politician. You know, say, you know, I appreciate that change. And and one other thing to note, um, the mill, the mill, I think they call it the mill. Uh, single home development that that was in my district that's down highies. The big complaint was it was going to lower the value of the homes around it. And and the first home went for sale for eight hundred and five thousand dollars. Which is more expensive than any home that ever sold that neighborhood. So I I think, uh, you know, which I think everyone's knew was going to happen. The price was going to be, you know, not a, not a low price, but hopefully the residents, you know, take a note that, you know, what will happen is now valuation in that area is going to want because there's a bunch of homes that are going to be worth they're going to be selling for a lot more. When the poor cops sell your own, they use those. You know, these seven, eight hundred dollar homes are now in your market range. So, you know, I I think the worry that that was going to be an issue, it's very well not an issue, you know, parking might well be, but we'll see what that. Otherwise, I'm excited for that development to come online. That's, you know, what was it? Seventy or eighty homes or something like that, you know, over a couple of years. You know, probably our last large little family home development ever, you know, in the bell. This is available lands. It'll be nice. So I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberts?
Um, I have a couple of things. At first, I just wanted to make sure that it was set on here that the um the traffic control committee is actually up and running and the application is available. We just need to contact city staff. So if anybody's looking to have a street control or refurbishing or something evaluated, please just reach out to the city for that. And then also, I just too wanted to say the RDA and the Salt Lake Health Department, all of the volunteers and the artists for the children treating last weekend. I thought it was a great event. Um, definitely have.
Thank you. We got a city manager report.
You define it.
Well, she was split out. Sorry. All right. Uh, you know, before anyone from here is beginning to say that, uh, our great attorney, she only has one. Uh, she did say that she would try to get out of an accident. Somebody couldn't do anything. So if you have any feeling, you can uh, get her a ground force tonight. Uh, really well, it's off. We should do that because she was here, which is not.
If we pass a resolution that she can't get out of an accident.
You just not show up, which you
I only think you're playing far right now.
All right, we got our volunteers. Uh, item A, Daniel Gasser requests final subdivision through combined six and fifty lots and three lots located at six fifty five West Center Street. Aaron, let me enter home. The motion to open public hearing, second.
Second.
We have a motion, second discussion on that. All favorably say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are in a public hearing.
Okay, and so this is for final subdivision for um, for the higher station one twenty five. I'm sure you're all familiar with its location on Center Street. So you can see here on the vicinity map that
Why can't we get this?
Yeah.
Did that work?
Yep.
Okay.
So they um have six existing lots right now. Their flat is just consolidated into what three total lots. So nothing is changing with the building. Everything about use is staying the same. They will just have two lots kind of where the copper lands can be going. Um, so this is their proposed final plot and the recommendation that she has from.
That's why.
Um, yeah, they they asked that at planning commission. I think they said for maybe future future things of the other two parcels, but they didn't have anything to complete planning the words for that.
It it just seems like they have if you want to divide into three various specific lots, which is fine. I just wish they would be run. Because like, like why not just two lots, right? And like, or why not? Four. Like, so there's a very clear reason why they want to do this. So I'm interested by where's the step was.
Let's see your plan start November.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments, or anything? Okay, with that, this item is open for public hearing.
Mayor, I move to close.
Second, we have a motion to second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that? And hearing none, all favorably say aye. Uh, passes the public hearing is closed, and we ought to be action. If it goes longer than this, consider a revolve in my subdivision on six and sixty lots and the three lots located by my center street, the main street form base code MSN. Uh, that's their motion to move.
Mayor, I move that we approve the final subdivision located at six fifty five West Center Street with the findings noted in the summary report.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All right, Laura, you call.
Yes, Councilmember Sperry.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Gettle.
Yes.
Okay, that period is taking. Moving on to item B, considering menu chapter seventeen, seven, one, one, three. He and table seventeen, seven, one, two of the Nibelstein's fall go to address the duplex. Hearing.
Second.
The motion is second of the hearing. Any discussion? All favorably say aye.
Yes.
Okay, we're in a public.
I think, Mayor, this is be considered a house item with skills with the approval process for two practices as one complex overlay zone. Uh, currently, they go to planning commission as a official use. If this change is made, then it becomes a second with Google, all the requirements will still remain the same. Height, size, setbacks, etc. So all this does is really it, it does speed up the process a little bit for those who would like to stretch to do this. Uh, the other zones will allow for use by rights. Building permit straightly and this will allow us to process. I'm planning commission, it's a good change.
Is this something that is employed in underseas?
Yeah.
We would just just keep coming up to you. It's already.
There are a number of others that it's just a and again, the requirements probably aren't changing for what they have followed. It's just
Can you just remind, uh, Pete, that administrative approval process, um? Isn't that like, you need, um, how many people?
I mean, I could look at it or any of your staff could look at it. They're just, um, who is right.
So it only takes one. S four.
We would just look at it and ask. And the planning commission, just as a side note, all of the new qualifications that they have received, at least I've heard, they've approved and had to. Their choice that they need. So this really allows them to focus on other tiny issues on the that I've got.
I'm this open for a hearing. Are any comments that for my comments to keep record?
Eric, I'm going to be close of hearing.
Second, here we have a motion, second, close of our hearing, any discussion? All favorably say aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Okay, public hearing is closed, and we're constantly action with this. Averorance twenty twenty two, oh, eighteen of running chapter seventeen to seven. One, three, being at the land tables. Two were relating duplex. We have a little, other than these, more families. Second, motion and second, any discussion? All ready to call one?
Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
And Sperry.
Aye.
Okay, members, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda on Iowa, consider minutes to October eighteen, twenty twenty. Continue motion.
Moving approved consent agenda.
Second, the motion and the second to approve the consent. Any discussion on that? All ready to call one?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
Barry.
Aye.
And Glover.
Aye.
All right, moving on to our action items tonight. Consider resolution number twenty twenty two, R forty seven, adopted in the committee board, many assignment list.
Have a way to make this supply uncomplicated. Um, we, uh, uh, as you're aware, generally annually, we will go through and review the board committee assignments. Um, and we'll update many of them at a time. Throughout the course of this year, we have done.
Um, and we'll update many of them at time. Throughout the course of this year, we have done some smaller updates as we have had some personnel changes. They will stay in the third one this year. Primary reason that I originally wanted to give the board committee assignments updated was was to reflect, um, uh, the promotion of Nate to the manager position. And also to reflect, um, the inclusion of Dustin, um, the animal services advisory board. Um, subsequent to that, there were some other committees that have been, um, showing up, wanting to we had decided we needed to add on there today. I think that, um, it is important that we still move forward with getting this approved tonight in some order so that, um, for example, they can be able to, um, uh, be our representative on the U N A board. Um, but, um, um, I did want to talk about anything that came up today. And then also, I wanted to say that what we're going to do is going forward. Um, we can do the next annual, so the bigger sort of change on committee assignments. I think what I'm going to do is break this list up into uh, committees where we have official Midvale representatives on boards. Then we'll have a list of committees that are, um, where we just have representation on the boards. But they don't necessarily require a senior group to see who's on those. And then, um, the other one is we'll add on there and include the membership of some of the current or potentially new volunteer type committees like the Parks thing. Right now, this is not the mechanism that we go through to choose or approve those committee members that are not included on this list, for example. Uh, so that being said, um, uh, we have updated the packet and, um, we've made a couple of adjustments even from what you previously were seeing. The first one is, is that I had mayor on share of homeless committees, one of the old name um, committee and and this packet, um, we have just shrunk that down. So it's only the Utah homelessness council. In addition to that, um, we also, um, included the Canyon's education foundation for researchers, um, that adds that, of course, I mean, put that on this list. And then we also added mayor's membership on Southern County Board of Health. Although that is an example where the appointee body is actually the county. You, um, so that was really more informative, informative than is the decision that you have. The other addition that we put on here is the Arts Council selection committee. And to talk about that and refresh you on that, and hopefully we'll give it some space to be representative on that. So two weeks ago, then, um, it came on the R D A board to send the hard comments.
Program in their return was within that, then board approved, uh, in that it listed, um, the membership. So it includes uh, R D A program manager, director, and R D A board member, arts council member, and um, and then just to refresh you, the art house will have both artists, both art. Um, it's looks like you can maybe have been selected artists that are going to be tenants there as well as helping policies, some of the times. And then also selection of community artists displayed there. Um, and so with that, um, as Matt had described, the majority of those were just driven by the board as it's always just administrative. Build those.
Your act is never.
It would be nice.
I think we're gonna fight over it.
Feel like it sounds like. Between all of my other responsibilities. Quinn's doing a, like a, like a little brother count up how many each of us already have chart at the moment.
And we don't have to follow that, right?
Oh, but no, I I I would, I would take that on. I don't know if I would take it on more than a role as part of the arts council member. You want?
If he doesn't want to, but you want to follow.
Maybe Destiny wants to.
I mean, I think it's one of those ones that on this. I mean, I would, I would.
If you want me picking anything with art, you're not going to be happy. So I I am not going to be the best one for that. But I'll do it if you want that.
Yeah. Well, it's something to, um, we, they're not, they are set. But they're not permanent set in stone, so we can an alternating. So I would. You know, I get on some.
If you're given around the time that they're expected to serve on this committee. Like one year term, so they can switch out at the once a time.
Didn't get it back specifically. Yeah. Yeah.
Any idea of like what days, times, and sort of kind of just just equal? And might Brian, where I or I eat or not Quinn?
At at this point, we heard say that also there are two beyond the words, but the words.
Yeah, or I mean, the two, the two members that would be the artists of that would be the board member and arts council representative. Maybe a citizen as well. And so those are two discussions. The staff would figure that out. So whatever the council preferred. Have you picked a citizen yet?
No.
We have. I, there's a quick wits owner, something that makes him go down. Jason, who also is also only arts council, but I think he should be on it no matter what. Either through, are are we hand selecting the arts council member or are we just telling arts councilman since?
Aren't you a member of the arts council?
Right, as I said, if somehow, you know.
Do that.
Well, sorry. So the other thing here too is, I think this would fit into some of these other committees around here, whether it's, uh, representatives of the planning commission or some of those where when we do the annual reshuffle, um, that would probably be appropriate time to be reshuffled on this part as well.
Alright, well, I'm going to bow out to the councilman Brown because he is a legitimate artist.
Right? Are you gonna arm the slide?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
One thing I wanted to, if at all possible, I, um, do not continue on, uh, his work. I think. So if anyone would like to pick that up from me, it's been, um, zero minimum from me. Uh, lots of questions. Of one or two people who participate in that historic society.
If anyone is, uh, would like to do that this evening, um, we can settle that now.
I meet once a month on Saturday morning. At eleven.
Being timely, we could also, if, uh, not choosing to. Does not refer to a technically defined staff that could temporarily do this until we have the next reshuffles unless someone here specifically would like to be on.
I think we're all happy with that. To be clear.
If Lisa can't mess with that, meaning Destiny can get up.
I mean, I think the actual investment analyst is just getting on there. We should just pick. You might even have heard that. So let's just do that.
You're exactly from Paul.
I'll stand up for Paul, no way.
I am sorry. I'm having a hard time following your discussion. This audio is terrible.
Just say no, Paul. Just say no.
Just say no, no.
There you go. He didn't, he will not.
Well, well, just got out of some Saturday morning.
So we'll, we'll figure it out. Now we'll, we'll work on her advice.
Um, that that is.
We're just leaving councilmen on air for now. If you're honest, it hasn't been through.
I think we'll.
Why don't you leave me on there for now for simplicity? And in fact, it was January. Second, then perhaps there's something else. Like when. Take care.
Okay, so I, uh, sure. So what, so the complication that I made up then is that what we'd be looking for is a motive to approve the, um, amended board committee assignments list as presented, uh, with the addition of, uh, Councilmember Brown as the representative on the arts council.
That was nice to lay that out. It really liked me.
And stated it perfectly. Great. So.
Second. Motion. Second. This sounds good with it. Uh, any discussion on that? All ready to call.
We need to include the resolution. If we need to include the reputation.
Uh, it's.
Sorry.
You want me to write? Uh, as well. It will be hard. I knew, I knew that we approved, uh, the amended resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R dash forty-seven, adopting the amended board many assignment list from Midvale City, including council member. It's weird looking for a person, Ron Brown, as the board member for the art house. Selection committee.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All ready to call.
Yeah, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
Barry.
Well, we're talking in third person. Councilmember Sperry says yes.
I Glover.
Aye.
Probably.
Hi.
Okay, that's all.
Hi, I have this to say. I got it. Kids were watching on the radio at home, so hopefully we're providing some.
Cool.
They give one day all the side. They learned that's why I like all the dollars.
Well, if they were watching, Lawrence, you were the star. It went downhill.
I get, I get that. I was just saying scared of the pot. So I was the star. The kids do well. Hey, I got home and they had a lot of conflict. Alright, moving on to our, one of the section items, I discussed the menu chapter eight, one night, many of this focal drawing wastewater disposal.
Good evening, Sperry. I believe last week in our work session, um, our last house special apartments director of South Valley. Um, I had meant to present this at say nine, but it looks so, um, poorly. Retain what he talked about. Um, put back room, South Valley Reformation, uh, water facility. Would say South Valley. Uh, they recently updated the rules of reg for their entry. They did that in conjunction, say, because they found some regulations that were partially within. Um, and and they're just jumping to the new rules. They have asked us to officially adopt those rules by resolution. Uh, and then when legal and myself started to get into it, we didn't see the need to do that initially. Um, there's two chapters code that cover this. We initially looked at the critical chapter. Chapter thirteen, oh, eight, uh, sewer system. Uh, that chapter details the relationship between the city and South Valley. And it it specifically states that we adopt the rules of regs that are formally approved by South Valley. Um, Midvale City is representative on the board, so here. Chapter eight of nine was for disposal. It contains three sections. Um, the first two sections aren't related to each rules, but, uh, also we uh, first two sections in abbreviated terms state that the city will follow the regulations adopted by the Utah Division of Health, Utah State, you know, pollution um, pertaining to individual wastewater sewage disposal. Um, those were adopted in nineteen sixty-five and revised to nineteen sixty-seven. Um, and neither of those entities exist that we suffer there. Uh, that under the name at that time. Um, currently uh, super septic systems regulated by the health department and guided by uh, the third section of of chapter eight does relate to the South Valley. And it states that we we adopted them as revised and amended in April fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. Which does click with chapter thirteen. Uh, in addition to that, two thousand and ten, uh, we adopted updated rules of res, uh, by a resolution um, in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and ten. So we kind of have three timeframes, three sets of rules, um, and it's not very so quick summary, um. Dr. A says we will follow the rules of two. We have a resolution says, uh, we will follow the laws of group in two thousand and eleven, and chapter thirteen states that we will adopt them as the South. So we look to the post changes, clean this up. Um, in addition, uh, it reached the code up to date on it, on about in current sewer system rules and regs. Uh, it's just really modern. So here, here are the proposed code changes. Uh, I'm here listening up and researching at this language. Assistant city. Um, the first two sections that, uh, relate to sewer, uh, septic systems would be combined into one and just simply state that Midvale City adopts all federal state county laws and regulations applicable to those systems. Um, chapter eight point nine thirty would be changed during adoption of waste water control rules and regulations. Uh, Midvale City adopts the South Valley Water Collection rules and regulations pertaining to wastewater control as amended together with So this does not conclude with chapter thirteen and any cleanup of the disturbance. So at at this point, are there any questions or discussion topics?
I was just gonna say, we flip this up.
If that is the next question. Okay, thank you.
This. When?
Hey.
Paul, make your motion.
Um, I couldn't hear. I couldn't hear.
Do a motion to adjourn, Paul.
Motion to adjourn. Let's get the heck out of here.
Hey.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry, Mayor, I should have.
No. I was waiting for you to say, I'm on. No.